Mayor Blackburn's not here today, so I'm going to serve in his place. And I will call the meeting to order at 10 o'clock. Public comments. A member of the public may address the City Council regarding an item on this agenda. Comments must be relevant to the agenda item. This is not intended to be a question and answer session. Each speaker must call and register with the Zoom moderator by the 9:45 a.m. deadline. Each speaker is limited to four minutes. Citizens may also submit written comments to be read into the record. Written comments must be received by 9 a.m., either dropped off at City Hall Utility Payments Dropbox or emailed to shelly.mackelhannon@curvilletx.gov. And there are no speakers, is that correct, Shelley?
Yes, ma'am. There are no speakers that signed up.
Okay. All right. So we're going to move on to information and discussion. EA is joining us virtually today. And so if we have questions for EA or if EA wants to join into the conversation, he is available. So we'll start with item 2A.
Okay. So looking at your agenda, you can see there's lots of items here related to water and wastewater. There's just several big projects that we felt like it'd be worthwhile to have a work session just on these items because these will be coming forward to you soon for some consideration. And so this is a great time for us to have just an informal discussion in a workshop environment about each of these. Stuart and I think Kyle, but PM. Stuart will present. And then we also have representatives here from Freezer Nichols who we would hope to hire to do the master plan for the water and the wastewater plans that it's been, what, seven years, Stuart or John?
Yes.
Since we've had them updated, we like to try to do them every five years. So it's definitely time to update those plans. And this is not like the long-range water plan. This is the nuts and the bolts in terms of piping and plants and so forth where the infrastructure should go. And that ties right into the NAP interceptor project as well and some of these other projects that you have here. So we just kind of bundled them together for one big discussion. And so at any point during the presentations, if you have a question, just let us know. So with that, Stuart, you want to kick things off?
Do I need to come to podium or?
Yeah.
So today we introduce myself, Stuart, here in Public Works Director. Today we have Freezer Nichols here and they're going to give us the presentation on two of the two of the projects that we're getting ready to start hopefully as your next agenda. And we'll have those on the next agenda if you'd like for the vote on them. But first, we'll talk a little bit about them today. Feel free to ask whatever questions you might have. The first one could be about the water and wastewater master plant. And the second will be about the NAP road lift station and the connecting line between that and Jefferson lift station. So first, these are our consulting engineers. I'll introduce all of them to you. John New, who's the who works for Freezer Nichols. Everybody here works for Freezer Nichols. Annie. And then Stephanie Nice. And Stephanie's going to do the first presentation for us on the water wastewater master plan update. And I will give it over to her for a brief presentation.
Right. I'm Stephanie Nice, as Stuart mentioned, an engineer with Freezer Nichols. I just have a couple of slides here, so we'll go over the scope items and then answer any questions you might have. So per the Curville 2050, the comprehensive plan, we want to update the water and wastewater master plan update. We did two separate studies back in 2012 and 2014 for these two separately, the water master plan and the wastewater master plan. So it's about time to update them to make sure that we are looking at any anticipated growth or changes from that comprehensive plan as well as looking at redevelopment and then some system rehabilitation needs. So some of the highlights of the scope, we will update the water and wastewater models. So we have computerized models of both the distribution system and the collection system. We'll update those with any projects that have been recently constructed as well as look at new customers. We allocate water demands based on your consumption records. So we want to get make sure we get those all updated in the models. And then a key component to this update will be temporary flow monitoring. We haven't done that since 2007. So that's where we install temporary monitors throughout the collection system where we can measure flows and then identify where we're having some infiltration and inflows. So where we're treating rainwater, groundwater in the system. Helps to identify where we have some leaky pipes or any rehabilitation needs. So that'll be really critical in this update. And then we will update the demands, so the water demands and the flow projections based on the growth rates from the comprehensive plan to get those two two studies synced up. And then really, we take all of that information, put it into the models and do all the system analysis. So we'll look at any existing system deficiencies where we might have, you know, low pressure or fire flow needs. And then on the collection system, make sure we aren't having any bottlenecks in the system where there could be some sanitary sewer overflows. So we look at the whole system on both sides and then identify any improvements we need through our planning period. So we look out 25 years to make sure we're covering growth related to any of the hydraulic analysis. And then new with this update is the condition and rehabilitation assessment. So we haven't done this previously, but with this plan, we're going to go and visit all of your facilities, look at the condition of the facilities, and then do some analysis on the linear assets, so the buried infrastructure, the pipelines, to see where we need to focus on rehabilitation. So not just growth-related, but really making sure the core of the system is accurately serving the customers and that we are investing in that infrastructure as well. So bringing both of those components together, the growth-related improvements and then the rehab improvements, putting them together in a comprehensive CIP. So we'll look at the different improvements, do cost estimates, prioritize those over the next several years to get all those projects identified and in the budget. And so that's the capital improvement plan. And then we do have a few additional services that may maybe executed as necessary with wholesale agreements, cost of service, that type of analysis. So then this just kind of itemizes our proposal altogether, looking at just under $430,000, $428,000 for the study. This kind of shows each of those major tasks that I just talked through. And I think that's all we have to talk through so we can answer any questions or have any kind of discussion on what we're proposing for the study.
How long will the whole study take? Do you have an estimate?
It does somewhat depend on when we do some of that temporary flow monitoring. We typically like to do that under rainy conditions, so in the spring or the fall. And then we like to do the model calibration for this water model in the summer. So depending on if we get this executed and in time for the spring, probably about 12 to 18 months scheduled to get it all completed.
No questions? A lot of stuff.
It is, yes. Very exciting. A lot of fun analysis, making sure we're looking at everything in the system.
Let me get a little bit more detail on mine.
Thank you.
Any questions for Stephanie?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
As Stephanie said, we started this process back in 2007 where the first water wastewater master plan was completed in 2008. They did both of the two studies, both water and wastewater. What we do is we take all of our system information, can you hear me all right? Take all of our system information from billing, figure out where those where that demand is in our in our water and wastewater system, and they plugged it into a into a computer model for us. Within that computer model, we're able to simulate demand. So if a new subdivision comes to town, we're able to say, okay, they're going to use this much water and our system handle it. What kind of improvements do we need to do? How old is our infrastructure? And they are able to put all that into the model and give us that CIP that we're able to march down the road with and figure out what we need to do to serve these different areas. In the next discussion, you'll see Stephanie talking about catalyst area number four, and that's kind of out towards Ingram. And what we're we're still following that plan. It started at the wastewater plant on the wastewater side. It went it went from Legion Lift Station to Burke Dale to Jefferson. Now, so Jefferson is behind HEB, so we're following that out to the west. Next one will be NAP road. But there's a section of pipe in between NAP road and Jefferson Lift Station that also has to be upgraded. So in these master plans, this is what really helps us decide what do we do first and how do we move forward with that? And do we need to do stuff at the plant or do we need to do stuff in the field more? So they're invaluable to us in directing what is our what's the best use of our of our funds? So saying that, if y'all have any questions?
I have just a couple of questions, if no one else is. Two probably city staff, so whoever to direct that to. So when we when we update this, are we going to then be going back to our long-range water plan or will it not affect our long-range water plan? Will that trigger an update there, like a brief, a small update or?
It could, but they're pretty they're separate. The orientation of those studies is different. What you're looking at with regard to the long-range water plan is the overall capacity and sources. And, you know, some of that piping, of course, with this would factor into that. For example, if we wanted to do another well and try to hit the Ellenberger, how far north do we need to go and is pipe already there or not? And and how soon would that be? And so we've got water, for example, up to I-10, but is that going to be the best spot to put a well? And so there would be some of that kind of a thing. But the one is looking at a 100-year time horizon in terms of water needs in general. And yet the rest, this one is really the nuts and the bolts, as I said, as far as how does it all fit together and work properly as well as what's been said earlier about the condition of it doesn't need to be upgraded or rehabbed. So it's both of those. And Stuart, you may have additional thoughts?
Yeah, the 100-year horizon is basically a source water study. And this is actually hard infrastructure, the pieces that get the water to the homes. So little different. But they do work together, but they're not.
Well, I was thinking more about when she was talking about the projections, right, of new growth, if that would affect and where that growth may be, if that would affect anything on that plant, which is kind of you spoke to that a bit.
So the new projections that we'll look at is we'll get with Drew and talk and talk about some of the developments that have actually come to the city and said, hey, we're interested in in developing this. They're going, we're going to take that and give it to Freezer Nichols and say, these are the areas that we've that we've heard discussions about. What would we have to do to potentially serve some of those areas?
That'll be really good. And then I want to thank the city staff for getting on the measuring the flow of bluffridge so quickly. So I'm assuming that this will kind of cover all of that kind of issue with measuring the flow in different areas as, you know, we've talked about the hills. And my understanding is that the owner of that property is now looking privately with a company to look at the own flow once it comes into to their home. Is that my correct?
That's right. We did a test on the pressure off the faucet on the home. It was fine. So there's something going on internally to their his system that that creates a problem.
So if there's flow issues, though, that are legitimately things that we need to concern ourselves with, we'll identify them through this plan as well.
That's right. And tanks, capacity, storage, you know, all that.
Pressure.
Mark, I guess while we're on that 430,000, is that currently budgeted?
Yes.
I didn't remember seeing that in the.
Great question. So we budgeted for this in capital projects. There wasn't a great deal of discussion about it beyond the workshop that you had. So and it was mentioned, I think, in the public hearings and Amy's presentation as well briefly.
Will you actually be paying for it this year if it's a 12 to 18 month turnaround?
It'll be over the whole period. They'll be drawing billing us along along the way. We'll probably go ahead and encumber the funds upfront, though, once we have a contract. And the capital funds are multi-year funds anyway, right?
Okay. That was my question.
Okay. That's any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. So the next agenda item is going to be the NAP road and the interceptor from NAP road to Jefferson. This will be the next step, like we were just talking about in our in our wastewater plan to get service to that catalyst area number four out there or expanded service out there. So with that, I'll let Stephanie Hopkins, or excuse me, Annie Hopkins, sorry, I got the tune, give you a brief update on how that scope of work would pay out for us.
Hi there. I'm Annie Hoskins, and I'm going to be acting as the project manager on the NAP lift station interceptor project. So a little bit of overview on this project. I know Stuart's already given you some, but Curville 2050 did identify these improvements related to the NAP lift station and both the upstream and downstream interceptors as being required to serve that strategic catalyst area four. So basically, what this includes is upsizing of the interceptor between the NAP lift station and Jefferson, the Jefferson lift station, also upsizing of the force main between the NAP lift station and where that force main ties into the interceptor, and then also upsizing of the NAP lift station itself. And then moving further upstream, there's a few portions of interceptor, as you can see in the figure, that are between Village West area and the NAP lift station that are also going to need to be excised. So the the city secured TWDB funding for the Legion lift station, and there are some remaining funds there since construction is now over. They do have remaining funds that they would like to repurpose or reuse for this NAP project. So it looks like there's about $3.7 million left in remaining funds. All of this information is being put together and sent to Texas Water Development Board right now. We have been in discussions with them about repurposing these unused funds for this project since it's similar. It is a wastewater infrastructure project that serves the community. So I believe that we're, you know, we're hopeful that those funds can be repurposed for that for this project. But there's still a few more, you know, boxes to check and eyes to dot and all that kind of stuff. So we're in the process of doing that right now. It looks like that the $3.7 million should cover design of the that interceptor that goes all the way down to Jefferson and then the force main that's between the NAP lift station and that interceptor. So basically, the downstream portion of this project. And then it should cover construction of the interceptor. Though as far as construction of the force main being covered with those funds, that's something that we're going to design the force main and put out the bid package and then see how the bids come in, see if we do get bids low enough to be able to include that or the force main in that same first phase. So the way that we've divided these improvements up is into three phases. Phase one covers, like I said, the design of the of the NAP lift station force main, upsizing that to most likely 12 inches, and then also upsizing of the downstream interceptor. I do want to point out that in the map you see there, we've got the existing interceptor shown in green, and then it basically shows upsizing in the same corridor. But as we know, it'd be pretty tough to upsize or to install a new line inside Junction Highway. So we are looking to probably kind of cut through that neighborhood a little bit adjacent to Junction Highway to better alleviate any impact on the residents there. So and then one more time, just to mention that that force main is will be constructed if bits do come in, you know, well enough under budget to be able to fit everything in that those remaining unused funds. So that's the plan on that.
I recall that force main runs right down the middle of Junction Highway. Is that correct?
The interceptor runs, yes.
The interceptor?
Yeah.
So it would be a mess.
Yes, definitely a mess. So, yeah, we would prefer to stay out of Junction Highway as much as possible, and I'm sure Textile would prefer that too. So that's the goal there.
You have to acquire easements then?
We'd probably put it down city roads, just not junk, yeah, so outside. Is that correct?
Yeah. Come down, come down Lois Street from where NAP road is next to Chili's right now, goes up towards past Walmart, behind Walmart, to Lois, go all the way down Lois, past the old city hall to Woodlong, and then they'll go kind of through the neighborhoods. It'll go up Woodlong and over and up and over until it comes all the way behind Autozone. And then it'll go out into the creek there.
And all in city right of way registered?
Yes.
City right of way, meaning the existing road or meaning the five to 10 feet on on the property?
Probably go through the road. So I can go back and show you. Let me see. I don't know the pointer. See if I can do it. The pointer on there? There it is.
And has this been designed with our street reconstruction and repair? Has this kind of been thought?
We've been watching them. There's one street that Kyle pointed out, we had to delay for next year because it was going to get worked on. And we said, well, let's wait and and get this project done. Lois has been on hold for quite some time due for that reason. The existing sewer line in Lois is very shallow and has brick manholes in it. And we knew this project was coming, so we said, we're not going to touch Lois until we get through with that. And so the actually, the water sewer fund will pay for some of the street improvements as well because of we're going to be there anyway doing doing this repair or doing these line upgrades.
But this doesn't have anything to do with the culvert and the flooding at Lois?
No.
No.
No, it doesn't.
So this won't.
It may have something to do that right now, there's a sewer line that runs in front of that culvert pipe that runs from east to west. We're probably going to have to relocate that sewer, you know, probably dump into this main line because it's not deep enough right now. It's it's, I think personally, I believe it's part of the reason those culverts are so shallow is because there's a sewer line that's right under the front of the leading edge of them. It's not under the culverts, but it makes the water have to be elevated a little bit to make it over the sewer line.
But it what will it delay that project?
No. We're hoping to bring that project to you very soon, at least the downstream portion of it. We have sent that to to Textile for their review. Our idea is is we wanted to bring them a complete project and have them bless it so that all the elevations are right. So we don't build a project on either side of a culvert. And they say, well, we want our culverts deeper or we want them shallower, and then it ruins both of our two projects. And so right now, what we've done is we've said, we know what the downstream side has to do, so and that's where the houses are in jeopardy, and we would like to move forward with that. And we've instructed our engineer to that that fact. And so he's given us a set of plans to move forward with that. We're still in the process of getting Textile to give us a nod to say, yes, this looks right. It's proven very difficult to to get them to commit one way or the other of that.
Stuart has, and just because I'm new coming into this, has the area east of the Jefferson lift station, let's say from from Jefferson Lift Station to the loop, has that area already down Highway 27, has that area already been improved and upgraded? Is that why we're going west towards Ingram?
Yes, ma'am. So on the wastewater side, what we what we attempted to do is start at the wastewater treatment plant and then build out to our to our service areas. Because as as we discovered in that first master plan that we we just talked about, that there was problems all throughout the city.
Okay.
Line sizes weren't big enough. And so the thought process is, well, if you start at the plant, make sure the plant can handle it, and then you start adding on past that, then you then you're building capacity that you can use immediately. And so we started at the wastewater plant. We built Burke Dale, which pumps right to the wastewater plant. We built Legion that also pumps to the wastewater plant. Then we moved down. We did Jefferson, and Jefferson pumps to Burke Dale or Legion.
Okay.
And then it goes to the plant. And now we're moving, stepping back another another step and moving to NAP road. And NAP road is going to pump to Jefferson, which pumps to Legion and pumps to the plant. So we're building this in the order it has to be built.
Okay.
So to answer yes, your question, yes, most of the service between Jefferson Lift Station and the wastewater treatment plant is made is is operational right now. As you go out towards the airport, on the other side of the plant, Legion is big enough to handle that. But if if we want to move towards Commerce Park or something like that, we may have to upgrade that lift station as well.
Okay.
But the core is there.
All right. Thank you.
Just a quick question, like it doesn't, you don't need to go into great detail, but with this upsizing, because the NAP lift station is new, is it so is it not online? Are we coming in behind something that's new and upsizing it? I don't, because I'm sorry, I don't know with that.
NAP lift station has been there.
Okay. So it's not new.
It's not new at all.
They were just laying pipes in to where the new project is on NAP road.
Oh, just raise, okay. First, so on NAP road, we had a new.
It's not on, it's not on the south side of the river. It's on the north side of the river.
Okay. So we're talking about.
Oh, you're thinking of the landing subdivision potentially.
She's thinking of the actual map.
Same NAP road, this opposite side of the river. This this one is right next to Chili's.
Okay. Because I couldn't understand why we would be putting new infrastructure in and then upsizing.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. Yeah, this is an existing lift station. I don't know when it was built, but it's it's been there.
That makes more sense.
For many years.
Okay.
And were y'all okay with the alignment or y'all want me to walk you through it? It's just a proposal right now. We'll have a chance to bless that again. I just told Annie, as I was looking through the slides, is like we, if at all possible, we do not want to go down Textile right away.
Question, Stuart. So the 18-inch is existing, it just needs to be replaced?
It's proposed, which.
The 12-inch is getting replaced.
The 18?
Proposed, those are all proposed. The green is a new one.
Okay. And it's currently 12?
It changes along the way.
12 and 15.
The pink at the top of the station.
You're turning at Commerce. That's the red and black. Is that Commerce Street?
I might have to get a little closer where I can see it. So this is Chili's is right here, and Walmart is right here. And we're going to come up, this is all going to be force main to right here, and it's going to drop into gravity, and it's going to come down Lois to, I think she has it on here. This is Woodlong right here. So we're actually going to come past here, go, and then we'll get into this neighborhood and come up, go down these these city streets over here.
Oh.
And then till we get to the till we get to Town Creek. And then it'll come into Town Town Creek. There's a big gravity main right now in Town Creek, which we have right of way to. And then it'll jump into Jefferson Lift Station. I'm sorry, I can't see that. It's pretty small on there.
Is that going to increase the cost of the construction by winding it through the neighborhoods?
It'll be a little bit longer, but I think it'll be a whole lot cheaper. It'll be a whole lot more convenient for our citizens. The difference in footage is about 500 feet, and we'll look at that as we do that alignment survey and find out which one is the most the cheapest drought and is it, are we getting a whole lot deeper by going through the by going through the neighborhood or not? But that is in the scope of work is to figure is to nail that down.
Is the thought that doing this will also alleviate some of that that water, that drainage issues and water problems that those those homes on the lower side of Lois are having? Or we have to wait for the other?
That's all that's all storm drains.
Okay.
So no, it has no.
So it won't impact.
The benefit is is on on Lois is what we can do is we can lower that street then. So once we get this in, we're going to take that into account and say, hey, we know we have a drainage problem here. If we lower the street, that will help alleviate that, and we'll get we'll get that drainage down past Take It Easy RV Park. And so all of that kind of, since we're tearing up this road, we've decided this is the place for this new wastewater line. Okay?
Okay. So to talk through the next couple of phases of improvements that are eventually going to be needed to serve this area, the phase two would be actual expansion of that old NAP lift station, putting in larger pumps there. Since we're going to have more flow coming into the lift station, we need more flow going out, so we don't have any overflows. And that is going to help us get to compliance with TCQ since you do need to have a certain velocity coming out of your your lift station into your new force main. Also, the division between phase one and two, besides financial reasons, is a logical division because you have, you know, your, we'll say, your your vertical infrastructure, your lift station, and then you have your pipeline, and it's a little bit different contractor usually. So that's why we wanted to group the pipe projects as much as possible and then also push these and the lift station expansion improvements to the next phase. And then that third phase is the upsizing of the gravity lines upstream of NAP lift station. And you can see on this map, it's a little bit small, but those colored areas where it says 11 and 11 on there, those are those areas that we're going to be upsizing.
Go back in just one second.
Sure. All right. So this is Freezer Nichols' proposal for this work. And again, this is for design of the new interceptor and force main all downstream of NAP lift station all the way to Jefferson. So I won't go through each each of these here, but as you can see, you know, we have our preliminary and different design milestones. Also, we have survey and geotech, and then we would be taking this all the way through construction phase services for a total of about $520,000. And I guess if it is a question that looks like our approximate schedule on this is probably seven or eight months for design and then a couple of months to bid the project and get approval from you guys, and then probably around 10 months or so for construction.
This is part of that 3.7 million that you have bundled in there?
Yes. Yes.
So we're looking at a couple of years out before it would all probably be completed?
Yes.
Either Ann or Stuart, you might also speak to the issue of, it's not just rehabbing what we have to take care of what's built. There's also a capacity issue in terms of adding more customers or more flows.
Absolutely.
So anytime we upgrade a lift station, uh, we try to, we build it with those catalyst areas in, in mind. And we're able to, we're, we anticipate through that master planning effort of what's gonna grow and what's gonna, how those catalyst areas gonna develop and what is that new flow gonna be? And then we build the lift station to handle that. And so they, they do, they, they work hand in hand. Super important that we, that we do both of them, um, as, as, as best we can.
Stuart, I know it's a vague question, but obviously there's some timeline that we, or time period that we feel that this is going to satisfy our needs. About a five year, 10 year, 20 year?
Um, so we update, we, we try to build everything on a, on a 50 year schedule. Doesn't always work because it's so hard to look out there, um, and, and that far in advance. And it depends on what, what comes in, you know, if we guess everything right, yeah, 20 to 50 years, 30 years is kind of our, our planning horizon. Um, but it's really hard to tell what's gonna happen and who's gonna tie on or, uh, so with one of the cat, one of the, the developments in this area is, is that Village West, they've been talking to come into the city for quite some time.
Ever.
Uh, also Ingram, Ingram's out, um, way on the end of our system there, how fast they're gonna grow, what they're gonna do. Uh, all those things come into play. Uh, as, as Annie was talking about earlier, you can only build a lift station that's, uh, it has, there's, there's requirements by the state. It can't be too big because the pumps have to run every so often, uh, a, a, a known amount of time and the velocity is in the, in the force main has to be so high. So if you build it too big, it goes septic and your, and your wastewater quality goes way down. If you build it too small, obviously you don't have enough capacity. So it's, it's, it's a very, um, very balanced act that we're trying to follow. There again, that's why the master plan, we, we try to anticipate. And we get with Drew, you know, it's a citywide effort, it's not just utilities, but it's a citywide, um, how, where do we think the city's gonna grow? What are the canister, what are we trying to serve and, and what are we trying to fix? And that's why we're able to build that into that master plan and get us a whole picture of what's the next five years look like? And, and, and where do we need to go and where do we need to be moving to be ready for development and, and what quadrant of our city?
Stuart, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, prior to COVID, we actually had an inquiry from Yogi Bear who wanted to add, I think a whole nother third to their park and that we just didn't have capacity. So we, but we told them about this project, so they're very keen on, on seeing this happen.
Is there anything in this, um, master plan that, that addresses the flooding issue that is on Harper Street?
No, this is just for water and wastewater. Uh, we did a, a master plan for, um, our, our storm water earlier this year. And, um, we have those, we have a list of the priorities of what, what needs to be fixed in, in order. Um, and now we're, we're trying to find funding for those and we have some ideas for that that we'll be, um, asking Mark to consider and.
Okay.
But is the Harper project specifically on the list?
Uh, Harper, Harper Road or Harper Street?
Harper Street.
Harper Street, yes, ma'am, it's on the list.
Okay, it's on the list, yeah, okay. And this would, this would also take in, oh, uh, on the other side of Thompson, the, all that undeveloped land right now uh, that goes up to basically Los Colinas. No?
No, it's on the other side of the river.
Mm-hmm, so this isn't anything on the other side?
Los Colinas, where's Los Colinas at? Oh, that's on.
Shepherd Rees.
Shepherd Rees, yeah.
We're on the, we're on the north side of the river, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So no, it, it considers none of that.
None of that.
Now, the water and wastewater master plan would, um, so they're, they're gonna be, so we're kind of blending the two projects. This lift station has nothing, it's not in the service area, that lift station. But yes, the water and wastewater master plan potentially would, would.
Would take care of.
Would build infrastructure to take care of some of those components.
So we'll actually be able to bring Village West in with the completion of this project?
If, well, well, we'll, we'll have to evaluate, are you talking about annexation or just as a customer?
Service as a customer.
Yeah.
We'll have the capacity to do that.
Yes, sir.
It, this, uh, Nap Road is broken into two phases. We're still trying to, we're, we're going from Jefferson to Nap Road. And then Nap Road has to be upgraded. And then there's a, there's a piece of pipe between Nap Road and Village West.
But you're, the con, it takes in consideration the contemplation of bringing that online, yeah. Any other questions?
Okay, so next we have the, um, design and engineering effort that's underway now for the, the new well uh, in the Ellenberger Aquifer.
Mark, just real quickly, same question as before, this is on our capital budget?
Right, uh, it's.
I know the 3.7, I guess is we're.
Exactly.
We're gonna spend this half million out of the 3.7, leaving 3.2 for.
Construction.
As far as we can get with construction.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we'll get those numbers back before we make final decisions on all that.
Oh, yes, um, you'll have the bids come back, um, in fact, you'll have a contract coming before you for the Freeza Nichols.
So basically, I know we're not actually voting on this today, but we're kind of looking at spending this $500,000 to move forward with the project regardless of what we do with construction.
Well, the hope would be that we'd use whatever's left over to begin phase one that's, has been described. We'll have to see how the bids come in.
Okay. So you're, to clarify, on item 2A, we're using our general fund. On 2B, we're wanting to repurpose the Water Development Board funds, is that right?
Um, actually on 2A, it's water wastewater funds.
Water wastewater.
So, um, coming out of the water wastewater system is supported by the, um, service fees. So, um, but yes, on the other, it's coming out of the, uh, Water Development Board, um, funding.
I know that, I know that's, again, I'm using the 3.2 and the 3.7, I'm taking the half million dollars out. Is this Nap Road construction rebuild to the same scale as the Legion Lift Station?
So it, it's to the, this lift station is a whole lot smaller. And so it, it, the, the rebuild will be to the same scale. We won't have to replace in phase two of this, we will not have to replace the wet well. Uh, we're looking at just replacing some piping, um, but in, in the pumps themselves. The reason that we broke this project into the, the phases that we have is, um, when you have a contractor come in, you typically have a pipeline contractor and then you have a, an infrastructure lift station. So we broke it here because it's a logical place to award the con, the construction phases.
The Legion ended up running 4.7?
What was Legion, 63?
63?
Yes, sir.
So if this is same scale, we've got about half the funds available?
Well, we don't think it'll, it's not the, the, the scope of work is the same, but the size of the project is not as big. It's a lot smaller lift station. So we have to go through the same effort of, of doing all the piping, but all the cost should be a lot less for this lift station. It's just smaller.
Okay. Mark, I guess at some future time, we'll talk about additional sources of funding then?
Yes, as we head into the next budget process, once we get a better idea of costs, which will be part of this, uh, cost estimating, then we'll be able to, um, look at how we could attack it on our CIP, uh, which year we would have the capacity to move forward or not. And, you know, where is that money gonna come from? Is it going to be cash or is it gonna be Water Development Board, is it gonna be something else?
At this point, are you anticipating approaching EIC?
No, not, not at this point.
Okay.
But it could, um.
Seems like it always ends up there, so.
Well, like with Legion, they, they were a partner on that, um, kind of a minority partner, but they were definitely a partner on that.
Okay, thank you, sorry to back up.
No, that's good. Okay, who's gonna take the Ellenberger well?
Oh. Mark and I'll have to put some slides up for us here for just a moment. Wrong one.
Oh, man, I thought we were almost done.
There we go. So this is Loop 534 Ellenberger well, uh, this, let's move on slides. Uh, this was exploratory well, um, drilled by Headwaters in the city of Kerrville. We entered into a partnership with them to drill the well. They explored the depth down to about 1,500 feet. Um, they found water bearing formation stopped about 710, um, so they cased off the bottom or seal off the bottom of the well. And then we purchased the well or reimbursed Headwaters for their cost of drilling that well. Um, after that, we, the city has hired Hewitt Engineering. Hewitt Engineering has gone in and designed the infrastructure surface, um, components that we need, which includes a pump, bringing electrical to the side, um, building fences, chlorine, uh, all the piping that's involved. He's given us the 90% drawings as of last week. His estimated construction cost is about $475,000 to finish out the well and have it in production. And, uh, we will be bringing y'all a, a, um, contract or a.
Bid award? Bid award?
A bid award for, uh, well, uh, we'll be, we'll be going out to bid, um, but we'll be bringing that to y'all for, for the construction cost, uh, award. Probably, it's probably gonna be a, a month or so before, yeah, before y'all do it. Hopefully we're, we're shooting to get this, uh, up and running, find a mid summer, late summer. I put late summer on the slide, give us a little bit of room. Uh, but we anticipate it being a dry summer. We would like to have this well online as soon as possible.
So you said maybe March is when you'd bring it to us, is that what I understood?
Yes, ma'am, that's the.
That would be the, the anticipated timeframe, okay.
So we'll go out to bid, we have the 90% drawings, there's almost nothing wrong with them. We're about ready to go out to bid for them. So y'all may see that on public people asking about the, the bid and how's that well coming? So, uh, we anticipate that, um, going very well. So far, the well's been great, uh, we haven't pumped it, um, per se, but, um, looks like a very good well where it's at, so.
And just to, to clarify, our 475 for that is in the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Remember that one.
And with that, I'll answer your question. There's a picture of, uh, Mr. Hewitt's design of where the pump will be setting and where the, um, casing is and, and, and everything that, uh, the way, the, the way the well's laid out. If you're kind of interested, if you're, uh, drawing schematic like I'm, like myself, I like looking at it as a picture, so.
180, 190 feet of water underneath the well?
Yes, sir. And it recovers very fast from when they're pumping it, so.
It is, mm, cause it, yeah, I remember it almost had no drawdown on it, didn't it?
Very little drawdown, yeah.
Wow.
That's exciting.
It stabilized very well, so. So y'all will be seeing that, um, we'll be out to bid for that, um, very soon and then.
The, the 475 includes tying it into our water supply system?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's all the, all the surface treatment we need to do for the well itself, uh, which is the pump, all the piping from the, from the well to.
I'm just curious, where will it tie into our existing system?
Uh, right outside of where it's drilled, there's a, we've actually, we anticipated, uh, um, we anticipated this and have a water main that's in front of the, front of the location. So we only have to build about 150 to 200 feet of pipe, um, to get it into the water main.
So the nature of this one is, again, all the treatments at the plant or at the wellhead and it goes directly into our water supply system, no further treatment needed?
Nothing else is needed, just, well, we need chlorine, that's the only treatment that we'll have, like all of our groundwater wells. So we just pump it out, uh, hit it with some chlorine and it's, it's ready to go.
But that's all part of the wellhead?
Yes, sir, well, part of this design.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Yes, sir. It's all on city property, so no easements required or, or nothing like that.
What size, this is off subject a little bit, but, cause I'm a little bit familiar with it. How do we, what size canisters do we use on our chlorine for something like this?
150 pound. They're, they're about like an oxygen bottle, a big green oxygen bottle. At the plant, we have 2, 2,000 pound cylinders, one ton cylinders.
This is exciting.
Lots of big projects coming, you can see why we went into work session.
Uh, we have talked to Headwaters about, um, is there any other options? And they're, they're kicking around some ideas of other wells. Um, and at least as it stands right now, uh, they're, they felt like they've kind of checked the box in the city limits of where they thought it would be. So now they'd be looking outside the city limits and said, well, let's, let's talk about it and see what that looks like. We're not, um, I'd like to bring it to, to my council and, and, and find out if we can help some way in, in finding more water, so.
Yep.
Okay. And that's, that's all for the Ellenberger.
Go to Lois Street now?
Let Kyle go in there.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
All right, we wanted to, uh, bring this to your attention, uh, back in July, uh, we had hot inspection services, there are hard Texas inspections come in, uh, based on what we've seen, we've done the stadium tanks, we've done Kerrville North. Wanted to bring this to you guys to kind of, you know, uh, get reassurance from, from your standpoint, but also fill you in as to what, you know, what's happening out there. Uh, so what you'll see, you know, this, this tank was identified in the 2003, uh, master plan, uh, or, sorry, the 2013 master plan as item 3D. Uh, it was with the stadium tanks, uh, repainting and, and basically it's just, uh, deteriorating, you know, old tanks, uh, for entertainment purposes, I should have put the invoice in here, uh, this was constructed in 1963. And so, yeah, it, it has had little to no maintenance since then. So time, timeframe, uh, as I've got on the second bullet, um, I know you've been asking budget. This is budgeted, you know, 20, 21, uh, as a carryover. You know, we, we wanted the inspection done first to make sure that, you know, we, we didn't open up Pandora's box. Uh, so we had them perform that inspection in, in July. With that inspection, they, uh, again, they did that July 14th, uh, they gave us an analysis of the existing site, the, uh, condition of the, the tank, uh, uh, inspection results with, with pictures and, uh, note the deficiencies and then gave us some recommendations moving forward with estimated cost. Uh, so as you'll see, these are some of the deficiencies. We have, uh, poor condition on the exterior coating. Uh, this actually looks a little bit better than, than what it is right up to it. Uh, it is very thin and brittle, I mean, it's just starting to flake off. Uh, you know, that, that's the perfect candidate of what we, uh, are typically trying to repaint. Uh, additionally, uh, we have some non-compliant structures. The, the manway on, on the left-hand side there is a 24 inch, uh, the TCQ men is, uh, 30 inches of diameter. We've been putting 36 in because, you know, it's possible next year they change. Uh, so stadium to tang in Kerrville North are, are 36. Uh, and then also the ladder, uh, nothing has been done on the ladder. Uh, it's non-compliant with OSHA, it doesn't have a safety climb, uh, doesn't meet their no slip, um, rungs, I mean, just a whole variety of things. Uh, in, interior, uh, what you'll see here is on, on the left-hand side, that's actually the roof rafters. Have a lot of corrosion, uh, a lot of, you know, deteriorating paint conditions. Uh, on the right-hand side, that's, uh, one of the pictures from the inspection video that, uh, brown, kind of wavy, uh, on, on the bottom is all sediment. Uh, so again, we're in, in non-compliance for, uh, potable water structures. And that's why we do these maintenance projects, just, uh, stuff like this happens when you're dealing chlorine. And so a little bit zoomed in version here of, of the roof raft, no, rafters. This is what chlorine gas does to, uh, the interior of those tanks. Uh, the, the two left pictures are the rafters themselves. Uh, and then the right is a, uh, center column support structure. And that'll be for a little bit discussion later when we have some, uh, options to present to you. Um, but ev- every one of these components has corrosion on it. The interior ladder, as you can see, uh, is severely corroded, uh, so again, that would get replaced. Uh, that's probably one of the most common things we see are, are those two, the, the roof rafters and, and the ladders.
Does all of this corrosion affect the drinking water?
That's what I was gonna ask. Are we drinking that?
I'm drinking my water, so I'm sorry.
Amazing what chlorine does.
Yeah, but that's, that's what your chlorine does, uh, to the, you know, to the exposed elements on that gas layer, not, not in the water itself. Uh, most of the sediment that you see on bottom, you know, that, that's all the ladder and bottom, we'll just piece it together.
And we test all over the system every month.
Most of the iron that, that here falls to the bottom of the tank and it stays in the tank itself.
It looks like it ought to affect what, what we're drinking.
So again, just kind of highlighting some of these deficiencies, uh, interior and exterior coating, uh, the shell manway, you know, uh, level indicators not functioning, uh, exterior ladder, interior ladder, uh, roof fence also, uh, non-compliance. Uh, you know, that's, I mean, we're just, as you see, I think, I believe there's 10, uh, deficiencies listed in, in this report. Uh, even something as simple as a, you know, second last one, soiling, uh, grass in contact with the exterior, uh, of the floor. with the exterior of the floor. It's a TCQ requirement that it cannot have that.
Can you go back one?
Is there anything in particular? It's just kind of a, you know, a little bit more detailed, but it's essentially just, you know, the pictures that I presented to you.
It almost looks like you'd be better off just building, putting a new one in there.
We're getting there.
Bingo.
That's why we wanted to come to you today.
Okay, thank you.
So again, you know, here's, here's a few more. That's the, the second one. The last one, like I mentioned, the sediment on the floor for potable water, water storage. It's, it's non-compliant. Regardless of what option we do, these would have to get fixed. So here's a discussion. Staff's recommendation is to not throw good money at bad. As you can see, the, the rehab cost of, of all these, which is, is not even including what we typically see on the, the floor of, of these tanks. We start blasting and holes start popping up because the, the floor is so thin. So, you know, the estimate's seven hundred and seventy-four thousand. To build a new one with a center column is eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand. The, the third option is basically a free span across, no center column. Some say it's, it's better for preventing, you know, less corrosion. It's not something that, that staff really felt the necessity for our stuff. And we have all, all of our tanks with these center support columns, million gallon tanks. And so what we looked at was identifying, first of all, do we need this storage? Capacity is a million gallons. So what we had done secondary, which I forgot to mention in here, is had freezing nickels run analysis for water quality purposes. What capacity do we need? And we do not need a million gallons. We need six hundred thousand. So our recommendation is to build a new six hundred thousand gallon tank, which would actually be cheaper than that.
So this number is, is the same size, is what you're saying, the eight seventy-nine one is same size?
Yes, ma'am. This is straight out of the inspection report, million gallons for a million gallons.
Okay.
Well, if we needed a million gallons in nineteen sixty-three, wouldn't we need a million gallons now?
Better.
For the future?
Well, so, yeah.
There again, nineteen sixty-three, they didn't have the water wastewater plan models that we're doing. And they just built things because that's what they, they felt was right. And a million gallons was a good rough number, and they used it on most of our tanks here in Kerrville. So as, as we, as we get smarter, as we have water quality issues, that tank, that water sitting in the tank, it's harder to keep it fresh if you have too much water. And so we're able to pull that in. It's gonna save us. They say rough estimates about a dollar a gallon is what you're gonna pay when you're billing a tank for ground storage. And, and you can see that they're pretty close, eighty-nine cents a gallon or whatever that is. So if you do a six hundred thousand gallon tank, it may save you three, four hundred thousand dollars, so.
Well, the props sold me. The pictures.
No doubt.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's easy to see why this has been budgeted in prior year, but it has, has been said they wanted to get the inspection done first, better evaluate. So we're delayed a, a year because of that, but it's definitely in this year's budget.
Okay.
I would recommend not allowing anybody on that roof is what I would recommend.
I'm surprised they haven't been, just...
Yeah. And hey, if we can get sixty years out of a storage tank, I think we're doing pretty good, so. That's amazing.
And, and the other thing too, I mean, like I said, this has had little to no maintenance. You're going forward, we're gonna make sure that everything's maintained. We don't have a choice with TCQ. So I mean, anytime you see some of the rust stripping on the side, you know, TCQ doesn't...
And just a logistical question again, again, I assume this is gonna, the new tank would go, if we do go that route, will go in the same spot?
Yes. Let me, not exactly the same spot as this one. If, if you see kind of in the, the top right portion of the site, we would put the new tank there.
So this tank would stay in...
We, we would demo once we were done.
Do what?
We would demolish the, the existing.
But I'm saying this, we would leave this tank in service till the new tank is complete?
Correct.
So we're not gonna have any water issues or storage issues?
Correct. Very little transfer time.
Okay, we just try and flip a switch?
Yes, sir.
Open the valves and go right on with our service?
Right. And unless something comes up, we plan, plan to leave all the piping, the, the pumps, everything exactly the way it is.
Yeah.
Just the storage is all.
And that, I, I think I saw it in there, that bid included the demo.
That's correct.
Okay.
And what's the lifespan of new ones? Do we know?
Sixty years?
Sixty years?
No, we don't know. They, they designed it to fifty years.
Yeah, I mean, for, yeah, for a steel tank, I mean, it's not unreasonable to think of fifty or sixty years, but you will have to go through and do a repaint about every fifteen-ish years or so. You're not gonna get more than, more than that out of a, out of a coating system. But there's no reason why this tank will, the next one will last as long as this one.
As long as this.
And if you go concrete, if you go concrete, which I don't know if that was, if that's one of your options, Kyle, but...
I don't believe so. I think we told him to stick with steel on the cost options.
We can, we can paint it like hill country colors, greens and browns.
Tybee antlers?
You don't wanna get into the dark colors. You wanna get into the light colors.
Can we sell lab?
We have a little history on that dorm. Sponsorships?
I'm surprised they still do concrete. I would think that they would go totally do.
No, con- concrete's actually, on the larger tanks, this one is, this one is a, a, kind of in that breakpoint zone, steel versus concrete. But on the bigger tanks, you would go concrete just because they, they will last even longer and you don't have to paint them.
And it's really steel as well and wound, and then they spray it with concrete on the outside.
Oh, okay, okay.
Makes it an easy decision when they're really, when you get up to like two, three, five, seven million gallons, you go concrete. On this size, it's, it's just kind of a balance.
So if, if nobody has any other questions, the, just to concur with, with staff's recommendation is really what I wanted to, to ensure moving forward, we'll bring next steps to you, whether that's an RFP through contractors or an engineer's design contract. Basically, like I said, staff's recommendation is that middle point, the, the center column support, but, but a new six hundred thousand gallon tank.
You're looking for us to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
No action, just kind of...
Yeah, just, just discussion.
Sure, let's see what it costs.
Yeah, yes.
And Mark, same question as before, budgeted?
Yes.
Yes.
The carryover?
Sure. I don't remember it, but I just...
Right, yeah. As, as I mentioned, this was actually budgeted twenty...
Make sure citizens know that we're not just...
Carryover.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Kyle.
Good job.
Right now, I think we have steward up for the CCN.
Mike's gonna help me with this a little bit, or at least correct me if I get anything wrong. So it's been, this project's been going on for, this issue has been going on for probably fifteen years?
Castlecombe, the city limits.
Or more.
Right, okay. Just, I'm sure that's part of your presentation, so.
So Castlecombe subdivision is a subdivision that was built outside the city limits originally. It's with, it's actually still outside the city limits and, but it's right on our border. It's within our CCN. The problem that, that's been going on there is they've been having a failing septic system for years and years and years and years. And the owner of the subdivision passed away. His son took it over and there had been no maintenance going on to it. And so it went back to the state of Texas, you know, where, where the state was trying to get ownership of it to, to fix the problem and, and to give it to someone else. They've, since then, in the last year, they have found a, a, they've been able to come to fruition with that. And, and they've put enough pressure on the owner, and he's, has, has actually passed away recently. But he has relinquished his rights to the water system and to the wastewater system. So the state has found somebody that's willing to take it over the wastewater side. But in doing that, they want the water CCN as well because that's pretty common, that those people are able to, to cover their cost on the water with the wastewater. I think it kind of needs to be a package deal for them to come in and do that. So they've approached the city and said, hey, we would like for y'all to abandon your portion of the CCN, just where the residents are in Castlecombe. They'll take it over, they'll fix the wastewater system, and they'll sell these residents water. And so with that, with that, we, they've, they've approached our legal department and said, are you willing to do that? We said, we'll take it to council. We, staff's recommendation would be that, yes, we, we would do that. This is the area of the footprint that we would be giving up of our CCN. This is on Peterson Farm Road. And it, if you want me to toggle back and forth, it's right before you get to the airport.
Can you go back to the, can you go back one, actually? On this, where are we looking for? It's on the east, right?
See the little target down there by the airport?
Clear down at the bottom. Bottom right.
Oh, yes. So what you have in the, is that ETJ?
That's our ETJ, yes, ma'am. It's just an overall city, a picture of the city.
Right. I was just wondering where it was and, and where in it...
Do you see it there? I may have to point it out.
I see, I do see that. I'm wondering where the city limits are as well.
That's the black.
The black is the city limits.
Perfect.
This borders the city limits.
Yes, sir. Across their frontage.
Yeah, and we've never...
So we're right there.
One of the reasons we've never approached annexation is because we didn't want their...
Problems.
They would have to want to be annexed, so all of those property owners would have to sign the annexation petition. And we would have to...
Extend sewer line to them.
Extend sewer and, and potentially water to there because they're, all of their mains within the subdivision are substandard. They don't have fire hydrants. They don't have meters at each one of the, at each one of the houses.
Are they currently on city water?
No, sir.
Mm-mm. So they're on a private well?
Yes, sir.
Managed by who?
Their subdivision.
Yes.
By themselves.
So when we, when we consider annexing further out, if and when we do that, and we need to put pipes in the ground, are we, how is that, how is that gonna work?
So currently, we have a water pipe that runs all the way across their frontage to serve the airport.
Okay. So it's already there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So explain the CCN to me.
So the CCN is a designation the state of Texas gives an entity to sell water or sewer service within a specific geographic location.
So we have an exclusive right, basically?
Yes, sir. And we would be, we would be giving up that right for the, the area that you see in yellow, or excuse me, yellow and, and what color is that? Pink? We'll say, we'd be giving up the right for those two areas to sell water.
But we're not currently selling them anything.
No, sir.
So there's no income loss to us. It's just we're not picking up the headache of...
That's right.
Upgrading their pipes and septic and all that.
And it's the...
Go ahead.
It's the home, the HOA, the homeowners have come to us asking for this.
Actually, it's the, they presumably have found a corporation that will run the wastewater and water system, and they're due diligence, and so they've come to us.
They are the ones who have come.
And they've said, hey, part of our due diligence is we want to be released from the, from your water CCN. And so we said, well, our process we use is we take that issue to council and have you all agreed to that. And we've, we've done this, I forget when we, when the state granted us our CCN, ten years ago-ish?
Hasn't been that long.
Well, maybe. Something like that. But we, we released, I would say, a handful, ten properties, big properties, from our CCN. We don't have a CCN within the city limits, we don't need one. But this was just to kind of, as a planning tool into our ETJ.
It goes into the ETJ?
It's...
Yes.
Okay.
A mile, isn't it a mile?
It was a mile, yes, sir.
And what does CCN actually stand for? It's an acronym?
It is. Certificate of Convenience and Necessity.
Okay.
It's just as Councilmember Cochran said, it's just an exclusive right that the state grants for a utility to serve in that area. And it just, you know, it's a planning tool, it's, it's to, so that people know who's, who's the provider in that area.
Can you, can you tell us who's the company is that's applying? Or is that not...
No, I, I could tell you if I remembered. I can't remember.
They don't remember the name right now.
Yeah. I think they're out of Missouri. We'll, we'll give you more information.
Can't believe anybody'd want it.
Well, I think in the last session, the IOUs, investor-owned utilities, wanted some certain things from TCQ, and TCQ says, y'all need to step up and you need, you need to help us with some of these projects. So...
Somebody's getting a sweetheart deal on it.
No, I don't think that's it. I just think that TCQ is basically saying, you need to do this.
We've had meetings with, with both the representatives, Mr. Mur and Mr. Buckingham, on this recent, well, within the last, what, two years, Mike? And so this is a big, it's been a huge issue of trying to figure out, how do we get these people off of this failing septic system and get it to work? Once the state took that over, they're, just what you assumed is, man, it's hard to find somebody that wants to do this. And like Mr. McDaniel says, is, hey, that, you know, they, they're saying, hey, this PUC is, if y'all want us to help, then y'all gotta pick up some of this stuff, that some of these failing systems for us, and when we need help too. And so they've found them as part of that agreement, where the city would have to release our CCN, so this, these other companies could operate there.
And again, I'm not, I'm all for it, don't get me wrong. I'm just curious more than anything else. So we're assuming probably that PUC is putting some money into this to upgrade these systems to get them compliant, so somebody will take it over?
I don't think so.
The, the state did it at the time.
So the state...
Because they were having to pumping it at all the time. They were having to pump their wastewater system, and they said, hey, we, we've got to do something.
Like daily?
Yeah, it was real regular. But that was when they had legal action against the owner. And so they, they...
So what is, do we know what they've done to upgrade the system?
They, they went in and they fixed some of the pumps, and they broke, they fixed some of the broken pipes in their, in their fields down below.
Yeah, 'cause I knew there was standing sewage on the ground.
Yeah, it was dandy.
Yeah. Okay.
It was, it was a big problem.
Yes.
It was a multi-agental, jurisdictional thing, too, that everybody was saying, well, you do it, and you do it. And nobody wanted it.
And pointing at the city, too, at times, and, and we had no, you know, fight, no, no...
Well, and I think we should do it. What would happen if we didn't? What if we said no?[1577.22]
And this company may not, right, I think, take it.
They wouldn't, probably wouldn't. Yeah. Okay.
But the next step is to bring you all a resolution on, at your next council meeting that will, if adopted, will affect.
This is basically for perpetuity, then. Is that correct?
Pardon?
It should be forever. Unless they chose to be annexed.
Is there any value associated with releasing a CCN?
And we're not getting any money for it, so.
Well, I mean, we just, you're relinquishing your exclusive rights. I mean.
Well, I mean, theoretically, there's an opportunity cost, but there's major issues in this subdivision that would be very costly to our taxpayers and our water and sewer customers.
What, we're talking 30 houses? I could count them.
Probably.
No, it's not that many.
There's not, there's not too many out there.
They've had issues with, I mean, you all may know this, they've had issues selling homes because of this issue. And this thing, I was trying to think, I think it was seven years ago.
About 30.
We went over to a meeting at the county on this issue, and there were probably 50 people in the room. And the thought was, oh, we can get this done in two or three months. And that was seven years ago.
But the answer at that time was give it to the city.
Right, right. You know, the city will pull our water line out there and.
If they, if the subdivision came back to us and said, we want to, we'd like to be annexed, and say they did, we went ahead with this, but they come back in five years and say, I mean, I, yes, we can say no at that time, but if we said yes, then what? Does it get really complicated then?
Yeah, I think you still have to modify the CCN after that. We would have to get, you know, their CCN provider to release them from it, if we wanted to serve them. I mean, sometimes cities annex areas, and they know they're not going to be the water.
Yeah, so this is, this release isn't potentially a forever thing. There's a, I mean, there's a way to, if the city wanted to annex that later on down the line, we could go back and redo this?
You could annex it and still have it, have a different water provider inside your city limits. I mean, you don't have to sell water to them. If they wanted, and we vetted that out with them and said, if you wanted to come into the city right now, this is what you have to do. You have to upgrade your water mains, put your water meters in. And we gave them a price for that.
Okay.
Along with the sewer side. They couldn't, they couldn't do it. That's where this, this investor-owned utility said, hey, you know, we, we can, we can help with this and kind of get it up and running, and we'll charge you accordingly. My idea, if, if the city wanted to sell water there is to go to that, later on, go to that provider and say, hey, we could sell you surface water. And instead of your well, something goes wrong with your well, that we could potentially do it that way, and then just have one customer.
You know, you, you're not in favor of fixing this problem yourself, in some ways?
We've had plenty of opportunities. It's too expensive. I mean, it doesn't benefit the citizens of Kerrville to rebuild that for them.
I wouldn't touch it with them.
Have you gotten cost estimates for that?
Yes, we put some together. When the previous city manager was here, we put that out there. Like I said, it's been going on for years and years and years. It's a.
Long as I can remember.
Yeah.
Well, and instead of individuals having septic tanks, you know, it's, it's one big septic tank for the, for that whole development, and it's just not good. It has not been good, so.
Since then, the state of Texas has quit doing, it's called a cluster system on the SSF. They quit doing cluster systems altogether.
Well, for the, for that subdivision, I mean, we need to absolutely say yes.
Yeah, I'm.
Fix it, help them be able to fix it.
We just wanted to discuss it today. I think we're going to try to get it on the next agenda. So y'all will be having an opportunity to vote on that in your next meeting.
Great.
With that, that's all I had to say. I'll turn it back over to Mark for those in common.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. Great feedback from you all, and a good discussion and great questions. So as has been said, we'll be bringing all these back to you. You'll find in your budget document back into the community investment plan, or sometimes called even CIP. All these items are spelled out there with the exception of the CCN issue. You'll see where we budgeted, maybe over multiple years, but it's all there.
Any further questions or comments?
Good stuff, good stuff.
Thank you all for joining us.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate the presentations. Thank you, Stuart. Thank you, Kyle, Mark, and Mike. At 11:12, the workshop is adjourned.